And I'll call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. I'd ask everyone to please join me to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council was made aware of the passing of one veteran, David E. Hill of Rentham, previously of Bridgewater, passed away on March 28th, 2024, at the age of 80. David proudly devoted himself to the United States with 28 years of combined military service in the Coast Guard and as a sergeant in the Army National Guard. I'd ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence to honor Mr. Hill. Thank you. All right, moving ahead with the agenda, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. The minutes were not included in the package this evening, so we're actually, I would entertain a motion to postpone this to the next scheduled meeting.
A second?
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? I see none. We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next item, item B, announcements from the president. I have no additional announcements this evening. Item C, proclamations. We have one proclamation sponsored by Councilor McKinnon. Councilor McKinnon is not with us this evening, so I will read it on his behalf. This is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the Town of Bridgewater, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. We have no additional proclamations. We'll move on to item D, citizen open forum. I just want to read a quick sort of note on this. Due to Massachusetts' open-meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If you'd like to make a comment during citizen open forum, we would invite you to approach the podium. We would ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, and if you could just sort of keep an eye on me, I'll give you a sort of like the quick nod as we approach that time limit. We welcome anyone to approach.
Good evening. Nicole Holmes, 80 Old Farm Road. Actually here tonight, though, representing the Bridgewater Tree Committee, and I just wanted to thank the council members again for bringing forward the proclamation for Arbor Day. It's a very important requirement, actually, for the Town of Bridgewater to actually be designated as a tree city. And actually, just two days ago, as you know, we reformed a tree committee, and for the year of 2023, the proclamation, our initial celebration of Arbor Day, and some of our other activities actually qualified the Town of Bridgewater to once again become a tree city. And we have not been a tree city since 2006, so it's really exciting news that we heard. We'll be getting the signs, and you'll be starting to see more with that to come. And we're really looking forward to again applying and receiving our second year in 2024. This was a very important step. We're actually extending our Arbor Day celebration a bit. We've done some outreach with the Williams Intermediate School. You may have seen the posters on the way in with the three award-winning posters for Arbor Day, and one of the students, Teagan McCauley, actually, congratulations to Teagan. We sent her poster along to the state competition, so we're looking forward to some great PR. And again, thanks, everyone. Please keep an eye out for our Arbor Day celebrations.
Thank you.
Ray Ajemian, 221 Aldrich Road. I happen to chair the tree committee, and I want you to know-
Recording in progress.
The fact that we are a tree city is totally due to Nicole. She did all the work for us to become a tree city. And as she indicated, we have to do this every year, and we're starting again. We will have an Arbor Day planting, tree planting, on Arbor Day, which is Friday, the 26th, which you're all welcome to come to. We haven't set the time, we'll let you know. And the tree committee is still working hard on other things. We're working with the town manager on hopefully getting a forestry department and a paid tree warden in place. Lastly, I want to apologize. We had a tree forum two weeks ago today, and the fact that it was scheduled the same night as your meeting was my fault. The forum went very well. We had about 45 people, and we will probably have another one, and we'll make sure that you're invited to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, please.
Good evening, town council members, friends, neighbors. My name is Amanda Napier. I use she/her pronouns, and I'd like to, well, first, I just, I want to lift up the tree work, which is brilliant, and I also am here to talk about the pride flag. So I'm a Bridgewater resident, 316 Main Street. I'm an adjunct professor of Religious Studies at Harvard Divinity School, and I want to say something about history and our contemporary reality, and then I just want to speak to you all as your neighbor. Outside Religious Studies, people don't really know what we do, but basically, I'm trained as an anthropologist and historian. My work focuses on the prison in the US and other impediments to a genuinely inclusive democracy. I'm dedicated to understanding cultural and religious diversity, patterns of oppression around race, gender, class, and sexuality, and the very messy disagreements that we have in the public sphere. So when I learned that some of my neighbors want to oppose the rising of the pride flag this year, I felt a moral obligation as a scholar, as a straight ally, as your neighbor, and as your constituent, to speak up. I see the pride flag as a tiny gesture of inclusivity in our town that affirms that my queer neighbors belong here and that my queer family members and friends are welcome here, too. So about history. The contemporary pride movement in the US is usually credited to the late 1960s, but that's really more when cisgender white people started paying attention, when an extraordinary uprising and moment of police violence against mostly white queer folks in New York occurred. It was similar to how the murder of George Floyd in 2020 seemed like a new problem to a lot of white people who had never been faced with racial violence. But queer and trans people of color and whites had already been organizing in the US for decades and finding spaces of refuge and comfort with one another while being criminalized and punished for it. If iterations of homophobia and the pride movement aren't new, queerness isn't new either. It's just our words that are new. A fun fact, the word homosexual wasn't even coined into the late 19th century, when the burgeoning field of psychoanalysis considered it a pathology. And the word did not appear in the Bible until the middle of the 20th, but that doesn't stop people from pointing to biblical passages and to science to justify their own intolerance. The rising of the pride flag on its own is a pretty small matter, and in fact, I think raising flags can seem like an easy thing to rally around when it's much harder to identify and change policies that continue to disenfranchise people with less access to power. But small matters, and symbolic ones, too, also do a thing. They say to passersby, hey, you're welcome here. I do not know all of the objections raised by my neighbors who would like to see it taken down, but I kind of just want to say, stop! When we have so many problems to work out as a state, a town, and a country, and when so many people are struggling simply to make it day-to-day, why would you try to make our town a harder place for folks just to be? In addition to my exasperation, I want everyone to hear an olive branch. If any of you are that neighbor so offended by the pride flag, please let me buy you a coffee. I want to get to know you. I genuinely want to understand where you're coming from. Till then, I'd like to make our town, I'd like to encourage our town and join with you in inching our way toward greater inclusivity. Distinguished town council members, I request that you affirm the rising of the pride flag once again this year. It's one of the things that our town, of our town, that makes me proud to call Bridgewater my home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Ajemian, 221 Aldrich Road. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution to raise the pride flag on June 3rd. I am Secretary of the Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, BCCR, and on behalf of that organization, I sent a letter to the Town Council requesting the resolution that is before you tonight for its first reading, a resolution to fly the pride flag from June 3rd to June 16th in front of the Academy Building, the seat of town government. When one enters this building, one can see down in the foyer, on the wall of the foyer of this building, a proclamation placed there in 2016 with the support of the Bridgewater State University, BCCR, and the Town Council. The proclamation declares, and I quote, "That the Town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, is declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable," thus ensuring that "our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business," end quote. Raising the pride flag on June 3rd is a symbolic action that goes beyond the words of the proclamation. Everyone driving by can see that this town embraces the community of the LGBTQ community and ensures for our children, our siblings, our neighbors, the right to live without fear or harassment, to go to school, to work, and to thrive in the Town of Bridgewater. I respectfully urge you to support this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. Pat Neary, Lakeside Drive. And first, I want to thank you all for your service, and especially Councilors Gallagher, George, and more, since you're winding down your terms, and we're grateful for the time you've spent representing us, so thank you. I'm here tonight to speak to you about an ordinance that you're discussing later. It's DFY 2024-005, Storage of New or Used Tires. This ordinance states that the storage of tires, which are depressing properties, attract mosquitoes, disease, et cetera, et cetera, however, you're still allowing storage of old tires. You're prohibiting storage of new tires or new tire storage locations, but you're actually allowing the old tires to remain where they were. You just want them to be in neat rows now, and that doesn't make any sense at all. I think that you are probably very aware that tire rubber contains more than 400 chemicals and compounds, as well as different oils. Tires break down toxic substances, and it leaches out into the soil and into our water. I think that, and I hope that this ordinance will go back to the drawing board, as new or old tire storage should be prohibited, as it is in many states, so we shouldn't allow it. I think you should take another look at this ordinance, and I thank you for listening to me. Also, it's not disrespectful when I leave, it's just that the acoustics back here are very poor, so thank you again.
Good evening, Ed Ivaldi, Bloxwood Lane. At your last meeting on March 26th, Bill Wood told you during citizens' comments that he was working on a handbook for the Town Council. While it was certainly a worthy effort and nice of Mr. Wood to do this, this has raised several questions for me. Number one, did any of you know he was working on this the first, or this was, was that the first time you were hearing of it? Did he present this idea to you before he started, or did he have your approval to move forward with this? Or the bigger question is, does he need your approval? I do know that the need for something like this has been suggested numerous times in the past by former councilors, as well as most recently by our town manager. In fact, I believe Mr. Dutton indicated several meetings ago that his team was working on some training for new councilors in anticipation of the upcoming election. If this is true, that wouldn't it seem reasonable to have a handbook, to have content in a handbook connected to the training that is being given? Seems like there may be a disconnect here. I'm also trying to understand the timing and why Mr. Wood didn't do this during his 11 years and nine months on the council. Could this be perceived by voters as grandstanding by Mr. Wood to impact his campaign for town clerk? This raises a bigger question in my mind regarding general offers by citizens to help. If someone in our community has an idea to do something that could help you or another government body, shouldn't it be a process in place to assess the need, vet out the details, and ultimately put a plan in place to make it happen? For someone to just go off on their own and do something without understanding the bigger picture and where it might fit in with other initiatives seems disjointed. Believe me, I'm not trying to stifle creativity or willingness to address a need, I just think that a defined process on how to handle these situations is warranted, and ask that you please consider discussing it as a body. Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Beryl Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive, Bridgewater, and I'm speaking in regards to the resolution in recognition of Pride Month, and just like the other speakers before me, I share their sentiments about the pride flag and about the community. I speak as a parent of a transgender child and an ally of the LGBTQ plus community. When my son Mika first came out to us as transgender, our main worries were for his safety in Bridgewater and elsewhere. But once I saw the pride flag flying proudly in front of the town offices in Bridgewater for the first time in three years since then, I knew my child would be safe here. I did ask Mika, he lives in New York now, but he went to school here, went to BR, lived here most of his life, I asked him to send me a comment about what he thinks of the pride flag in Bridgewater, and I'd like to read that to you. Since my name is Mika, a former Bridgewater resident and a BR student, as a young person who struggled with my gender and sexuality, the lack of visible safety made adolescence difficult. If it wasn't for the Safe Space stickers on teachers' doors, I would never know what safety felt like. With the pride flag waving in downtown, I feel a similar and more significant sense of safety in this town. Symbols like this show that Bridgewater is a warm and welcoming town for everyone, so I stand firm in my belief that the pride flag should be flown downtown during Pride Month. And of course, Mika comes to visit, and it feels so much more freer when he comes to visit us in town. So I want to thank you for your consideration, and I hope you will support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adeline Ellenberg, 76 Aldrich Road in Bridgewater, and I am running for councillor at large. I have a couple of things I want to clarify. Are we, is the public allowed to ask questions during the hearing of FB, the Form-Based Code? Is the public allowed to comment, or am I restricted to this comment time? If someone can answer quick before my three minutes are used up.
Hearings do include a public-
Pardon?
Hearings do include public comment-
Excellent.
-as long as there are new comments. Prior comments shouldn't be repeated.
Okay. That I will reserve my comments for that time, so long as I know that I can have it. And the second thing is, I just wanted to comment on the flag thing, and that is that perhaps we have the American flag fly the highest, and then we have all the other flags, whatever persuasion underneath it, because it is the American flag which gives the freedom of speech for all those other flags to be flying. So that's a compromised proposal. That's all.
Hi, Lorraine Powers, 51 Sunrise Drive, and I did want to clarify that the American flag does fly above the pride flag. Just to answer your question. I have three very brief letters from people who could not be here tonight. The first one is from Reverend Elizabeth Stotts, pastor at the Central Square Congregational Church. Dear council, I am writing today to share with you the support CSCC has for the annual Bridgewater pride flag raising. Over the past several years, our church community has been honored to host many events for the LGBTQ community in Bridgewater and beyond. As an open and affirming congregation, we are passionate about supporting this marginalized community. Currently, there is an unprecedented wave of proposed and enacted laws across the country that aim to harm the LGBT community, specifically those who identify as transgender. The Bridgewater pride flag raising is one very visible way we can show our support, and we hope the Bridgewater Council will do so as well. The next letter is from Lisa Hogan, who is executive director of an organization called Bee Community, another LGBTQ agency, to the Bridgewater Town Council. We are a nonprofit organization in East Bridgewater who supports the LGBTQ plus community and other marginalized communities. We stand up against all discrimination of marginalized people groups, including any protest of raising the pride flag in Bridgewater. We support and partner with BCCR and will stand with them at the flag raising on June 3rd. Flags are symbols of community, unity, and visibility. Through our organization, we intend to continue to build a more inclusive and diverse community of acceptance, where individuals are celebrated, supported, and free to be their authentic selves. We believe the raising of the pride flag in our community is part of making this happen. And the last one is from Jay Verhusky, and he is a member of Bridgewater. It is a belief of mine that everyone deserves to be treated with kindness and that we should strive to leave people better than we find them. When this comes, the need to treat people who are not like you and who don't share your beliefs and views, treat them with kindness. It comes with the need to advocate for those who are oftentimes overlooked. It comes with celebrating our differences and allowing people the opportunity to find community, support, love, and family that makes sense to them. As a 43-year-old queer and trans individual, I have lived through decades of change, progress, and validation. When efforts are made to stifle visibility, acceptance and acknowledgement are taking major steps backwards. The simple act of raising a flag can bring about the feeling of validity and hope. It can give someone courage to feel okay to be themselves, feel valid to be part of the community, and feel safe. This is so important, to feel safe to call this town home. Raising a flag is a beacon that, as a community, we promote diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is also a symbol of acceptance. The decision to fly a pride flag is not a decision of politics, it is a decision of humanity.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak, which I thank you for in the past when I've come here, and I wanted to read something that was a little more from the perspective of young people. Rebecca Fleisch-Cudero, 135 Deerfield Drive. Thank you for the reminder. Apologies. Although I'm commenting today on the raising of the pride flag, my remarks can reflect the situation facing all historically marginalized and ostracized people who, despite the promise of the American flag, have had to fight for equality in this country. Individuals, and particularly young people, who live in rural areas or suburban communities like Bridgewater, may not see and feel the support and inclusiveness experienced by those in large cities. Flying the pride flag, as others have said, signals that at a local level, we in Bridgewater are allies. It also provides an opportunity during the ceremony for people to learn about and acknowledge the historical and contemporary challenges of marginalized groups. A high school sophomore speaking at our first flag raising in 2021 conveyed how important the flag raising was to them. I'm paraphrasing what they said, and they said, "Raising the pride flag over Town Hall shows that those who are LGBTQ plus are welcomed in Bridgewater." I hope the flag will be flown for many, many years to come so that young people in the future can see that they do belong here, their identity is supported here, and here in Bridgewater, they are accepted. I'll end by echoing their words. I, too, hope the pride flag will be here to convey this message in Bridgewater well into the future. All are welcome here. Thank you.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. Can you guys hear me back there? I know it's hard to hear everybody, so I just kind of, I'd sent a long letter. Hope you guys, councilors, all got through my long letter, so I'm not going to read it, but I just want to reemphasize on the ordinance for the zoning. I just hope that the councilors are listening to people like myself on the concerns we have. No one's saying not necessarily to do it, but it needs to be done right, it needs to be tweaked, it can't be rushed. I know we have grant deadlines, but it still needs to be looked at closely. I don't know if you have any attention to closing it to the public tonight. I hope you don't, because trying to, you know, everything's been tweaked so much, we need time to reread whatever you decide tonight. Again, I feel strongly that the building should not be five stories. I know you voted that the last time. Five stories is still too high. I drove around with my husband in Bridgewater and trying to picture five stories. It's too big. You go look at Axis and Viva, they're huge. Can you picture that in the center of town? And I'm not sure if there's a limit, because right now you have it starting at the beginning of Broad Street where Justice Earths is. I can't picture, is there going to be limits? I haven't been able to figure that out. Is there limits where the five stories would be? Is it the whole CBDR, or is it just down by Campus Plaza? So I'd be very concerned about that. Also, I have, and before I forget, I haven't heard much about the CBD S, standard area. There's been a lot of disgust about the R. I would like, I hopefully will discuss that tonight to clarify exactly what is going on with that. I don't want that to be forgotten, and there's a lot about demolition in that, and I have concerns of how it's written. So I just, I just hope that you revisit the story height, and I even drove down Route 18 towards Whitman. There's an apartment complex before 14, that's a three-story apartment complex, and I can picture, that's big enough. So four stories, I think, is the max to compromise. And adding residential units is not going to stop traffic. It may have some more foot traffic, but you can't be expecting that these people aren't going to have cars and not drive around anybody anywhere, so it's still going to increase traffic, and it's been noted that, oh, we're not going to have much traffic. And I just feel that we need to look at this closely, and I hope you've read what I wrote. And I'm also concerned about density bonuses. To me, it's still considered a bribe. I'll give you this if you give me that. I have a, if it's zoned for a certain way, that's the way it should be, no bonuses. And I just want to make sure we keep the historic factor, keep the town, small town, and putting big, huge buildings is not going, is defeating the purpose of trying to keep it a small town. So I really, I could go on and on, as you know, from my letter, but there's just so much to this, and I hope the train piece is separated out. We do not need to decide on the train. The train doesn't need to move, is what I meant to say, in order for this to be processed. We need this to be processed for the grant. So thank you for your time, and I really hope this doesn't get closed tonight. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak? Please just state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Steve Black, 145 Leggie Street. I'd like to read a letter from a sophomore at BR. She writes in support of the Pride Flag Raising, and her name is Kayla. I'm a part of the high school's GSA, which is the Gender and Sexuality Alliance. Mrs. Jordan informed us about the meeting today, and I would like to say something that could be shared. I'm a sophomore at the local high school who identifies with the queer umbrella. I spoke at last year's Pride Flag Raising, and it was an amazing experience. Seeing a Pride Flag in our town is a great feeling, knowing that the town is accepting. Not all students in other places can get to feel that way. I can speak for the whole GSA when I say that the Pride Flag raising means a lot to us. Regarding the Juneteenth Flag, I'm not someone who celebrates it, but I have many friends who do. I know most adults commonly call it a made-up holiday and disregard its meaning. Juneteenth marks the anniversary that slavery was announced free. After the 13th Amendment, which legalized slavery, many slave owners didn't share the information about their slaves. Juneteenth is when African-Americans were told they were free. This holiday has been celebrated since the 1800s, but became known as a federal holiday in 2021. Removing the Juneteenth Flag raising is wrong. And again, that's from Kayla. Thank you very much.
Hi, Kayla Silva, 51 Douglas Drive. I'm here in support of the resolution and recognition of Pride Month. There's, everyone said it much more eloquently than I, but it really means a lot to have that flag in our town. It means a lot to a lot of people. It helps me recognize that this is a town that I can live in. And it really shows that we are a town that stands for inclusion, diversity, and peace. Thank you.
Yep. As long as you're a resident of Bridgewater. Great. Just ask you state your name and address and then.
My name is Sherri Turner, and I live at 67 Brewster Drive. I am here in support of the Pride Flag and the Juneteenth Flag. I think our children are watching. I have a son who is gay, and it matters very much if his town accepts who he is and if he sees people representing that he is accepted for who he is. You know, some people may or may not be aware, but there are a lot of mental health issues that can come into play with feeling like they have to hide who they are. And the fact that he is openly out and feels supported in this community by people like Reverend Beth Stotts is really important, and it's important for him to see that other people support him too. Our kids are watching.
Would anybody else care to?
Sam Baumgarten, 60 Short Street. Good evening, and thank you again for your service. If you're a Red Sox fan, you could call me Kenley Jansen tonight. I'm hoping maybe we can close the comments about this, but you have certainly received the message about the importance of flying the Pride Flag and then soon after the Juneteenth Flag. You made an amazing statement three years ago, which has positively impacted this town. Elimination of flag raisings would be a step backwards. It would represent a narrowing or a closed-mindedness in how we view our fellow citizens. There is nothing divisive about giving recognition to groups that have been discriminated against or treated poorly. These are not special interest groups. These are people who they are. That's what they are. They are people of color, people of LGBTQ persuasion. It's not a choice. It's who they are. So I ask those who oppose, where is the harm in flying a flag? A flag is a welcoming statement for all of us. I am a proud American, and I fully appreciate that our country and our flag have stood for freedom. Just tonight, we recited the Pledge of Allegiance with liberty and justice for all. I hope that we all try to live up to that pledge, but as we all know, the United States has failed to bring that pledge to fruition. Making that pledge a reality, moving us along to becoming a more just, more equitable society, is enhanced by these flag raisings. And I hope that these events continue to raise awareness and cause people to examine their beliefs and modify their behaviors. Any call to reverse our Pride and Juneteenth recognitions will be the divisive action, not the flag raisings. So I sincerely hope that you will continue along the line that we have been going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, councilors. John Donahue, 261 South Street, Bridgewater. I'll be brief. I just want to echo the sentiments of the speaker a few speakers ago about the zoning resolution. I know you've all done tons of work on this, so I'm not here to tell you what to do or how it should be done, but I just want to, as a 20-year resident, moving to Bridgewater and bringing up a family here and coaching in the Bridgewater Little League for the last 10 years, we've fallen in love with this town and the people here, and it's a privilege to be part of Bridgewater. It's such, it's been such a lovely place here. And I know there are certain laws that the council has to confide with in regard to the zoning, but I, if I could echo the, again, the statement of the previous speaker. If we could do our best to keep it in touch with the current character of the town, there are, I have been through other towns, we've all been through other towns where there are some monstrosities. So the more we could do to keep the character of the town, it's such a nice place. Please do that. Thank you.
Hi, David Michael, 21 Quail Run Road. I know we've talked a lot about the Pride Flag tonight, but I think it's important. Dear esteemed council members, I stand before you today to advocate for the continued support of the raising of the Pride Flag for the fourth consecutive year. Raising the Pride Flag is not merely a gesture. It is a powerful statement of inclusivity and acceptance. For members of the LGBTQ community in Bridgewater, seeing their flag flying high signals that they are seen, valued, and supported in our town, it fosters a sense of belonging and safety, which are fundamental human needs that everyone deserves. Furthermore, the act of raising of the Pride Flag sends a message to our youth, particularly those who may be struggling with their sexual orientation or gender identity. It tells them that they are not alone, that there is a community here that embraces them for who they are, and that their identity is something to be celebrated and not shunned. Additionally, supporting the raising of the Pride Flag aligns with our town's values of equality and diversity. It shows that we are committed to creating an environment where all individuals, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, can thrive and contribute positively to our community. Raising the Pride Flag demonstrates solidarity with my LGBTQ community, and especially for individuals who face discrimination and prejudice daily. It is a visible reminder that Bridgewater stands against bigotry and intolerance in all of its forms, and that we are actively working towards a more inclusive town. In conclusion, I urge you to reaffirm your commitment to the community by supporting the raising of the Pride Flag once again. Let us continue to be a beacon of acceptance and love in Bridgewater, where everyone feels seen, heard, and respected. Thank you for your consideration.
I hate to disappoint everyone. I'm going to talk about something a little bit different than everything else that's been before you tonight. Tim Fitzgibbons, 238 South Drive, Vice Chairman of the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee. And I just want to say, first of all, I want to thank the town manager and the town council for working so well with us together on the, on the budget for this year. As everyone knows, it's been a very, very tough budget. And I just want to make sure everyone understands at home, and hopefully the town manager and the council can make clear that the number being appropriated in the operating budget or being discussed tonight in the first reading of the budget is relative to operating expenses and not capital, that there's capital elsewhere in the budget, and that our full request for funding will be, will be honored. I know, I know it will be, but sometimes people get worried when they see different numbers, and so I just wanted to bring that up. So thank you for that, and thank you for all you guys do here and gals do here. And then secondly, I just wanted to rise before the meeting started. I know this is Mr. George's last meeting. He's not going to like me when I say this, but I've served with Mr. George in, on the town council for many years, and you've done so much good for so many people in Bridgewater, Sean. My hat off to you. I appreciate all that service. We didn't always agree. Sometimes that's fine, but I always knew you had the best interests of Bridgewater at heart. And I would say that to everyone coming on to the committee and trying to replace your, your big shoes is always come in with that attitude that we want to do what's right for the town. We don't want to do what's right for A, B, and C, but what's right for everybody. And you certainly brought that attitude every meeting, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mark.
Yep. Just state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gill, 45 Winter Street.
My name is Marcel LaTerno, 45 Winter Street.
We moved to Bridgewater in 95. We love this town. We raised two wonderful children who are now productive adults. Some almost 20 years ago, across the street at the old town hall, we obtained our marriage license when it first became legal for gay people to marry. So you figure 20 years has gone by, and why do we want to go backwards? We've progressed so far, and I know in town, there's a lot of people like us. And I worked second shift for years, came home through the center of town, and that first year that I saw the flag, the Pride Flag, and the library, I was so proud of my town. And no matter what our differences are, we're all the same. And we just need to remember that. We don't know what the future holds. We have today. We learn from yesterday. And I want to thank Bridgewater for helping me educate my children. And I want to thank all of the people that made it possible for me to be legally married to the love of my life. And after 40-plus years together, please keep that flag flying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak?
Jane Callahan, 335 Grange Park in Bridgewater. And I would simply like to also stand in support of the flag rising, both of them, the LGBTQ Pride Flag and the Juneteenth Flag. It just, it pains me to think that this is even a conversation in a country and a world where it's so easy to be divisive today. I don't understand why it's so hard to just take joy in celebrating people who are just being themselves without creating any harm to anyone else. So I would ask you to represent me and vote in favor of those two items. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak?
Gary Maurice, Village Gate Drive. I just want to speak about the, what's going to happen in the downtown. And I guess you could say, I talked to a person downtown, and they said, "It's going to be transformational, Gary." I says, "Yeah, it'll be transformational, all right. Take it from an old Brockton guy." I saw transformation. We went from a suburban, a really good suburban city to what it is today. And it's happened all across the state in different communities. There's 12 communities now lined up against this, and there's a lot more coming. When you have to ask for a waiver right away, we're in trouble. We're in big trouble. To give you a perspective of the scale of this thing, it's high-density housing is what it is. And it's, it's, I guess it's a form of control in a way from the state, and you guys have to bear the brunt of it. I understand that. But if you put even near what they're saying, we've got to put for housing 1,000, 1,400, just go down the Axis. Look at the Axis on Pleasant Street or the Viva. Each one of those is 300. Picture five times that. Put downtown four, five, six stories high. Is that what you really want for the town of Bridgewater? I certainly don't. For the very things that I moved out here for are going to be gone. And all these young couples that came into this town on my street, nice young couples, they moved out of a lot of cities. They were in apartments, condos. They came out here, they loved the town. I says, "Well, don't love it too much because you, wait till you're going to see what's going to happen downtown." And if we had the old town meeting form of government, there'd be 1,000 people, maybe more, in the high school, fill the gym, when they, if they truly found out what's about to take place. Because you really have to give this some thought. 300 would be too many, never mind 1,000 or 1,400 units. That's, that's crazy. It really is. So I'd hate to see it happen, but it looks like some part of it's going to happen. I understand some of it's got to be raised and refurbished. When you start talking high-density housing, it changes everything. And it's basically, some wonderful folks move in, but it's a transient population. Things get congested. It starts to look like a city, and it feels like a city, unfortunately. So please consider what you're about to do. This is the biggest thing you'll ever do in the town. This is the biggest. We just got through with a massive development down there on Pleasant Street. Now we're headed right into another one? Come on. Please. Congratulations to Mr. George, by the way. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Would anybody else care to speak? You've already spoken once.
Okay.
Yes, we do have public comment at the end. I would ask you maybe to hold it, to speak then if you could.
I just want to confirm that I'm able to speak during the hearing, as you had said, or do I need, I restricted my comments?
That's, that's correct. Yep, you'll be able to, as long as it's not the same comment as before. If it's new information, we can speak during that, the hearing. But right now, right now, we haven't started the hearing yet, so I'd ask you maybe please to just sit down, and we'll get right to it. Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay. Seeing no one else, I will now close Citizen Open Forum. Thank you all. We appreciate the comments. The next item we have is E, appointments. We have no appointments this evening, so we'll move on to hearings. We have two hearings this evening. The first hearing is actually, is item petition P 2024-019, Petition for National Grid in Verizon New England, Inc., Installation of Polls at 145 Winter Street. The time is 7:50. I will now open the public hearing. The notice was posted on 3/26/2024 in the enterprise, and a butter letter is were sent on 3/26/2024. I'll start by asking if the petitioner is present and would like to make a presentation or speak. Please. Thanks.
Everyone, my name is Alonah. I'm here on behalf of the National Grid. And just to kind of explain, we're doing, we're looking to install one new joint on the pole, Verizon National Grid, the only pole, in order to put a rider on it, which will bring the... will bring the primary down, and in order to power the transformer on 145 Winter Street.
Great. Okay. We'll start by saying, are there any general questions from the public about this? I see none. We'll move on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? I see none. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? I see none. Are there any questions from the town councillors? I see no questions from the town councillors. So with that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. The time is 7:51.
Make a motion to approve?
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I see none. We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The petition passes. Moving on to item B, proposed zoning amendment ordinance D F Y 24 004, central business district and form-based code. This item was continued from a prior meeting. So we have already, in that prior meeting, gone through an opening presentation, public comment in favor, public comment in opposition, and questions from the councillor about it. I do recognize that there are people who are here and interested in talking about this. So we will entertain comments from the public. We would ask that you introduce new information. If it's prior information, I'll just sort of jump in and try to steer you back to something new. But would anybody from the public care to add any additional information or make a comment?
Yes, it was Adeline Elmer, 76 Aldrich Road, and yes, I am running for councillor at large. The thing is, new things. I found out from Mr. Stanley Kravitz, a couple of things, that we do not have additional capacity in sewer and water, and the college is presently hooked up to the town of Bridgewater. I would like to advocate the town of Bridgewater and have the state do its thing on state land. Now, another thing Mr. Kravitz pointed out was the T station on the college land. There is a big tank underneath, which has some sort of moving thing in it. If we were to move the T station to the center and disturb what is the land there and everything, Bridgewater might become liable for a super fund type of cleanup, and taxpayers can't work that. So I think that needs to be verified about the tank, and I think that if so, then you should not be moving, even consider moving the station. I would like to point out that we need to negotiate with the state before we pass the form-based code. Let me explain the logic. For the state to take on the college in its super system with the prison, they have to agree that they will do that, some sort of commitment. For things like the fact that the station will stay at college, we need to have a commitment from them. Oh, thank you. Okay, I won't talk so loud. And so I think that we need to have a strong negotiating team. Mr. Ruli, you've been doing a nice job, by the way. We need a strong negotiating team, because we are in a position of strength now, before we just voted in, here, you got what you wanted. I think we need to say, hey, Bridgewater needs this, 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 and this. Let's talk. And then we'll talk about the form-based code zoning. So I would strongly urge you to put it off until negotiations and commitments from the state have been made, on grants, on where things go, on all of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public care to speak? Okay, I see none. We'll close public comment and move ahead. At this point, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Apologies, sorry.
We have to discuss.
Yeah, there is an amendment. Yeah, so the version we have in front of us has been amended through the prior conversation. I would entertain a motion to amend, and we can talk about the amendment.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to amend as attached in our package. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the amended?
What is the amended?
So, Mr. President, was the amendment included in what was published?
I believe the answer is yes. The published version is the amended version. Yes, I see affirmative there.
Can we let the public know what the amendment is? We know, because it's in the packet.
There's, you, through your comment, can share what you'd like. I think that the information is in there. We could certainly speak to it.
Procedurally, I think I heard a motion to approve, and then a second, and then a motion to amend. I don't know if I heard.
There wasn't a second to mine.
Not on the motion to amend?
No, no, because they brought up the amendment.
Right, so I think I heard the motion to approve, that got seconded, right?
Yes.
And then now, a motion to amend. I just want to make sure we get a second before then we.
I think we have a second on the motion to amend as well.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep, no, thank you. So, we do want to make sure everybody is aware of what's happening. So what we're observing is not anyone trying to not share information. Procedurally, at the last meeting, we did talk about a change to lower the building limit from six to five, and to do some additional cleanup items that were discussed and published in a notice in the last one. Between the last meeting and this one, those changes were made. And so that's why we continued the hearing last time, so that they could come back in front of us in a clean format for us to act on. So procedurally, just so everyone's aware, the motion to accept the amendment is saying we agree that we're reacting to the cleaned version, the updated version. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just if I may add one point about the amendment. The amendment that, the text of which is included in the final version that is accompanying the agenda for this evening's meeting, which I suspect many of you have already seen, perhaps downloaded, perhaps printed, as I have here, does contain the amendments that were adopted at the joint meeting between the planning board and the Community and Economic Development Committee of the town council. I've forgotten what day that was. It was about a week ago, which was a three-and-a-half-hour-long meeting. During that three-and-a-half-hour-long meeting on just these amendments, the planning board expressed their wishes with respect to very particular portions of the plan. They were discussed at great length, voted on by both the Community and Economic Development Committee of the council and the planning board, and adopted by both bodies as is required. So that is just in very broad terms, the nature of what this amendment consists of. Thank you.
Yeah, we don't entertain public comment at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, I attended that meeting, and I'm unclear whether or not, I know the planning board, I know the Community and Economic Development Committee of the council approved three to zero the amendment. The planning board had some reservations about the height requirement, and is it clear that they did not recommend it?
If I, sorry.
Yeah, I could address that, too. I was at the meeting. So there was reservation regarding that requirement, and there was a vote whether or not to recommend a different height requirement that failed. So what you see before you is what I believe the original one was, that went back to the planning board and Community and Economic Development. Nothing changed relative to the height requirement, because at that level, at the planning board recommendation level, it failed. The vote failed.
Thank you.
Questions in the chair?
We cannot entertain public comment during the discussion. Do we have any other councillor questions? Yeah, councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my understanding is that the amendment is for five stories, not the six stories.
That is, that is correct. The version we're voting on.
That, I think that that's what the public wants to make sure, is that the amendment has, I know some want to go lower, but the initial proposal was six stories, and right now, what's before us is five stories. Page 24. Yeah, so that's what's before us, not four. It's five. So I guess if I could, Mr. President, and through you to the town manager, Mr. Ruli, I do have a couple of questions regarding this. And I guess the question is regarding the five stories. Is the five stories holistically throughout the whole zone, or is the five potential for a five-story building in a certain area of the zoning?
Five-story buildings are limited to parcels of 160,000 square feet or more. That's four acres. So right now, the only potential site where you would see that would be potentially a campus plaza.
Okay. So, I know back in January, I asked this question of you, and I know you probably can't reveal too much, but I know the Perkins Foundry property is, the Perkins Foundry project is going forward, as far as I know. But that has nothing to do with the form-based code, so to speak. They were going forward with that prior to this. But I also asked, I asked a question back in January relative to a potential development that has come to head in the downtown area. And I just want to make sure, I asked you this question, that this form-based code approval is really, has a lot to do with a potential project that is currently being considered in the downtown area. Is that true?
It is not limited to one project. It is limited to the CBDR, to have an expedited approval process for projects that meet the checklist, no different than somebody coming in by right to the building official, saying, "I want a building permit."
But is there an active project that could be in jeopardy if this fails?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Okay.
If I may just add one point, that is that the so-called CBDR district encompasses what we commonly refer to as the campus plaza area. It does not include the central square area.
Right. Well, I mean, I've been following this in other communities, and I certainly don't want to see the downtown become, you know, what's happening out on 104. And I don't think it will. I think that responsible development is still something that would need to be considered before the planning board, if someone comes forward to develop something. I know that everybody in this room, and many people throughout this town, have been complaining, complaining, complaining about the Broad Street property. And I know that there was a project that was approved a few years ago that never went, never came to head. But I do think that there's a real possibility of something coming there now, whether it's because of this form-based code or not. I certainly would hate to see a potential development go away if it's because this does not go through. Although, Mr. Ruli said it doesn't really, it's not, this isn't going to factor in that. And I think that that's important, because yes, whatever is developed on the Broad Street property, yes, it's going to be housing and commercial. I don't want to see a five, six-story building. But I do think that something on the Broad Street is something we all want in this town. We're sick and tired of driving by there and looking at it. So that's what I'm weighing. I mean, I've seen that property empty for 20, almost 25 years now. And I remember the days of the Bolin Alley and Friendly's. I remember the days of Senzo's and Friendly's. And I remember the days of Bob's Breakfast and Friendly's. And I, I mean, I really would like to see something go there. And housing is an issue in this state. Housing is an issue in this country. And I think that if we have a chance to provide housing to some people that need it, I think that's a good thing. But I don't want to see a five-story. I don't want to see another, you know, Viva on Broad. And I don't think we would see that. I think we'd see responsible development, similar to the project that was approved by the planning board a few years ago. That's what I'm weighing. And in my opinion, the campus plaza is, that is, well, it's way down the road if it ever, ever happens. I don't think there's any desire, in my opinion, from what I've seen, for that to change its commercial looking the way it does now. So I'm open to hear what other, my other colleagues have to say. But I'm comfortable with all the work that's been put into this.
Thank you.
I'd definitely like to summarize some of the conversations, and thank you, councillor Chase, also for touching upon the joint hearing we had with the planning board. I also want to make sure that we recognize that the planning board had some very specific amendment requests that we, as a council, should really take some time to talk through in this forum right now. So the first one, I know folks don't have the whole thing right in front of them, because this was a very lengthy document, but it was section 9.8.4.22. So again, 9.8.4.22. So this is about expedited permitting, but in particular, the role of who actually has final say on a development project. So we have had several conversations back and forth about, you know, the original proposal in this ordinance talked about a technical review committee. Then we found out that we can't formulate it that way. So we're, I'm still not sure we're 100% where we need to be in terms of the role of the planning board for approving development projects. The planning board did make it very clear that they are pro-expedited process. So that isn't the issue. They suggested a 30-day review period for submittal and plans for development, to be sent to them for discussion, comments, and recommendation. There was some concern around, like, is that enough time? But the planning board also said that they would commit to making sure that they would indeed honor an expedited process, but they would still like a 30-day review as part of that, so that they can have some input. So that was one piece. So as we talk through this, are we allowed to, you know, have Mr. Ruli and the town manager respond to some of this?
If you have a question for them, or for me to them, but yeah.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. President, to Mr. Ruli and the town manager, I would love to make sure that we fully understand the implications of that. And, yeah.
So I can pick up that and just give a little bit of a comment, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Ruli. Mostly, my comment involves making sure that you speak into the mic, so that everybody can hear.
Oh, sorry. I'm kind of guilty of this. Sorry, guys.
It's my most important comment. But I do recognize that there are folks that are concerned about the ability of the planning board to have a review. The amendment, as councillor Robinson points out, does send a development proposal to the planning board for review and comment, and during that 30-day period. So this does not, as I mentioned prior, it's not detrimental, and it's not helpful. It's sort of a neutral amendment. But I'll defer to Bob for additional.
The section that was added is limited only to that area south of Plymouth Street, by Borough Ave and the MBTA tracks. It's in relation to where the existing platform is. The Attorney General Office wanted us to include that, because the platform hasn't been moved. So all of the changes that were agreed to with the CED committee and the planning board have to do with that limited area. And those were that they would get the 30-day review, as council member Robinson has stated, that the way the language was written, it could be 15 or more units per acre. It's limited to 15 units per acre, that the flex frontage that's articulated in the document would be applied to that area, and that there would be an affordability requirement, that if a project in that area had 10 or more units, that 10% of those units would be made available to households earning more than 80% of area median income. available to households earning more than 80% of area median income. Those changes were allowed because of the way that the meeting was advertised in terms of calling out those sections that were discussion. Those are minor changes, as the manager put in his memo. We don't see those to be helpful or detrimental to the overall Form-Based Code. Some question as to whether or not the Attorney General or the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities will allow that 80% to survive, but that's their choice.
Mr. President? So I believe yesterday, we all received an email forwarded with the comments from Michael Dutton to us in regards to the planning board and CEDC recommendations to the council for changes drafted for the Form-Based Code. I think it would behoove us to do two things. One is to review these and see if we adopt them as amendments. And second thing, and I hate to kick the can down the road, but allow those to be incorporated into the document, give the public two weeks to review it, and then have a final vote at our next scheduled meeting. If we put some of this stuff through, I don't think it's, personally, I don't think it's fair for a lot of people that want to see it. I'm not saying they're going to agree with it, but at the end of the day, whatever is approved is in front of everybody, be it yea or nay, and then move forward from there however it's decided. That would be my recommendation.
So if I can respond, I don't entirely disagree with that. The one thing I would still like to do is still use this forum to talk through these proposed amendments because they were already publicly discussed in the joint hearing the other week.
I have no problem with that. I'm saying moving forward to a final vote. That's what I'm saying.
That part I do agree with as well, yeah.
So if it's proper, and Attorney Rollins, I'll kind of relate to you on this, I would make a motion to adopt the recommendations that were forwarded to us by Mike, by Town Manager Dutton on April 8th for the recommendations of the planning board and the CEDC to be incorporated into the final document for review and final disposition at our next regularly scheduled meeting. I think we went a little too far, but at least adopt and include these recommendations into the Form-Based Code that we have out there.
I don't even think you need to make it that specific. I think literally, you could either vote on the motion to amend as it exists, withdraw the motion to amend, have your discussion, incorporate them on your own terms, and make a motion to continue the hearing to the next meeting.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, what is on this email is not in the current form that was in our packets.
I have no idea. I didn't see the email, so I don't know.
So I guess my intent is, and I basically agree with all of these, is to make a motion to amend per the recommendation of the planning board and CEDC. So I'll make that motion right now, and then we can discuss it.
So you, I just want to be clear on procedure before, and then you guys can discuss whatever you want. As it relates to procedure, are you going to vote on a motion to amend, amend it as it is, and then rather than approve, make a motion to continue to the next hearing?
That would be, that would be my intent.
All right, so then you already have a pending motion to amend. You guys can discuss the motion to amend. You can make, you can approve the motion to amend, which you can also amend again at the next hearing if need be. And then you, at the end of this, rather than voting on the approval, someone has to make a motion to continue, and then you just continue it to the next date, sir.
So can I comment about this? So the amendments proposed by the town manager and Mr. Rulie do not include everything that the planning board recommended for amendment. So I would rather not support that motion because that, hence why I'm trying to get us through this process of like, let me walk through all of the proposed amendments that the planning board proposed and we discussed in this public hearing as a recap.
Sure, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't aware of that, so I would absolutely support that.
Right. So it's just a summary of what was discussed in the public hearing, you know, knowing that not everybody attended the three-and-a-half-hour meeting portion of that public hearing. So that's why I want to walk through this, make sure that we walk through the amendments that have been proposed by the town manager and Mr. Rulie, and then we can decide what we want to do from there. Does that make sense?
So maybe just sort of weighing in, I think, I want to make sure I'm following it. There are a couple, there are a couple amendments that we want to make. One is the amendment in our packet that's described on page one. That's, those are the amendments that were circulated at the various meetings.
That was dated March 20th. I think we got two sets of, I think if you, if you referred to the date on the memorandums with these situations, I think that's kind of-
This is the only time I wish I had them all printed out.
And then the second thing is, those conversations were held against that, and additional amendments were proposed on top.
That's the April 8th amendments that the joint-
So what I might propose is that we do a motion to accept the March 20th so that we're all on the same base, and then entertain another motion with discussion for the additional ones. So the motion right now on the floor is the motion to entertain the amendments from March 20th, which are outlined on page one and two.
That was in tonight's packet.
That is in tonight's packet.
Yep.
References, the density bonus in 9.67, the overlay district in 9.9, and then updates maps that sort of weren't correct in the original version, the CBT zoning district map correction, frontage type plant, regulating plan map, MBTA community overlay district, and then the FBC submission checklist. So I would, we have an open motion on the table with the second and discussion on those amendments first. Is there any additional discussion on that? Okay. So I would enter, we can move to a voice vote on that. So all those in favor of amending as described in the March 20th memorandum, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes. So that's the version that got circulated. Now I would entertain a motion to amend with the-
With discussion around-
With, for discussion.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to amend, including the April 8th additions?
That's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to amend, including the April 8th amendments. Right. And is there a second, I would entertain a motion in a second for that.
Second with discussion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for discussion. Okay.
Thank you for that. And apologies to the public that they have to see this not as organized process. So again, I want to reiterate that there was this discussion, the planning, and I, this is just a summary, in the, in the promise of to bring this back to us as a council to make sure that we have the discussion, because not all of us are, were present at the other meeting. So I already covered the first one. The second one was related to the stories, the four stories maximum. We're not going to discuss that piece because the planning board, as Jason had also explained, they were a split vote on that. We already voted as a council, so we're going to move on from that point. The third recommended amendment that was, again, discussed in this joint hearing is on Section 9.9A, 9.94. And there was some, there was a few points raised here. The planning board recommended that there should be 15 units per acre, not written as, not as it's written where it says it's open-ended, saying less than. There's a point around this should say that multifamily built under this section should follow the flex frontage requirements in 9.8.65 and the general architectural standards in 9.87 and its subsections. There was more discussion, again, around projects in size of 10 units or more constructed under this section shall have 10% of the units affordable in perpetuity. And then a new suggestion was also, project built under this section shall be subject to site plan review by the planning board and shall comply with the performance standards for larger projects and the landscaping and screening ordinances under site review. So that's a lot, which means all, every single one of us needs to be sure that we have fully read this ordinance and fully understand what's being asked of us as well. So with that said, any questions around what I just read? And I'm happy to reread it because there was a lot in that one.
Could you just repeat the section numbers, just to make sure everyone's-
Sure, it's Section 9.9.4. And again, recommendations, 15 units per acre, not written as open-ended, multifamily under this section should follow the flex frontage requirements in 9.8.65. And then two new additional recommendations, projects in the size of 10 units or more constructed under this section shall have 10% of the units affordable in perpetuity. And then the other addition, project built under this section shall be subject to site plan review by the planning board and shall comply with the performance standards for larger projects and the landscaping and screening ordinances under site review. So the first two points that I mentioned, I think are probably, to me, that's definitely a level of expertise that the planning board brought. And I think that that is probably nuanced around some of the language. And at the time of the discussion, I don't think that there was any concern or pushback from, from the Community and Economic Director. The question around affordability, this has been a challenging topic. So this overall initiative, as dictated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, has purported that this effort is largely about affordable housing. And the secret here is that it's really not in some communities. If you've met your 40B requirement, there is nothing that mandates or dictates that we have to offer affordable housing units in these developments. Now granted, there is something to be said about housing will be more affordable once you get out of, you know, Boston, right? But in terms of this level of what I think the general public would consider, oh, affordable housing, this is not a requirement for us in our particular community. However, there have been different schools of thoughts here. I, for one, would love to see some affordable housing units built into this type of development. I don't know if I would necessarily say it has to be in perpetuity, but I would love for us to, to think about, this is a good thing to do so that folks can afford to live in this community, whether it's a young family starting out, or a professor, or a young person, you know, young professional, or senior citizen. So I do believe in the aspect, me personally anyway, and then from what I've heard from lots of folks, people want to be able to afford to live here. So that's something for us to discuss, I think.
Any additional comments from the counselors? Counsel Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just with respect to Counsel Robinson's last comment regarding affordable housing, I know that it's a topic that Mr. Rulie has addressed on any number of occasions, and he, he gives a capsule version of it that I think is very succinct and very understandable. And with your permission and through you, I would ask if he might tell us what really is the meaning in this context of affordable housing.
That's a lot of pressure.
Bob, you've only said it like 200 times, so I think you could do one more.
So a couple of things. I mean, initially, we had the six stories in there because that was a mechanism to get affordable units for the density bonus. I understand we're reducing that. So in the CBDR, that went away. The way that the legislation is written, there are categories. So arguably, 80% of area median income, in excess of 80% of area median income, is not affordable. The definition of affordable housing is you're considered low-income if you earn 60% or less of area median income. You're considered moderate income if you earn between 60 and 80% of area median income. Reference point, median area income in Bridgewater is $115,000. So if you're an individual making $72,000 a year, you're considered moderate income. The standards that, and I don't disagree with Ms. Robinson, is that, you know, there are pieces of the statute that aren't written very well in terms of, yes, we want affordable housing, but you can't specifically request affordable housing. There are mechanisms within the statute for requiring affordable housing. But what that does is you have to provide the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities with an economic feasibility study that any percentage of affordability below 80% is going to pencil out for a developer. You have to get permission to do that from the state. For that restriction that we have in here now of in excess of 80%, we still have to have a monitor. Either the town has to monitor that, or a developer would have to monitor that. So for context, we're talking about an area that doesn't have any parcels in excess of a half an acre. Most of these are a quarter, you know, a third of an acre, so it's unlikely we're going to see any kind of development of that scale. But, you know, again, it's been brought up earlier. The clock is ticking in terms of by April 26, we, is the cutoff for us to submit letters of expression to the state to apply for one-stop grants. I went through this at both meetings, the year-pass meeting and the joint meeting. There are at least 14 funding sources that we are not going to be able to apply for in this fiscal cycle if we are not in compliance with submitting the plan. Now, there is a chance that we can submit the plan in the AG's office, or the secretary's office will come back and say, "You need to make some changes." This has happened in Framingham, where they gave them conditional compliance so that they could move forward with their grant applications. I don't, the only piece that concerns me here is that in excess of 80% language. Whether that survives or not, I don't think it's going to have any impact. Most of the Form-Based Code has nothing to do with MBTA communities legislation. It has everything to do with redevelopment in the Central Business District. I mean, I think it's important that people are aware of that. The MBTA legislation does require, on paper, that we allow for 1,401 units. The legislation also says it doesn't require that you build 1,401 units. We know that that is an impossible task in that half-mile radius wherever the MBTA platform ends up. So I don't think we're moving fast. Some of the issues that were raised tonight, the manager and I have engaged conversations with the Department of Corrections, with the university on wastewater. We are looking at other options regionally with respect to water, suggestions that there's pollution associated with the MBTA. We have checked both federal EPA and state EPA records. There is no record of any contamination at the Spring Street site or the parking lot on the Bridgewater campus. So I mean, I think there's a lot of rumor and innuendo out there. We've verified, we've run every one of those ground balls out. You're not going to see five-story buildings on Broad Street because, again, the requirement is that you have 160,000 square feet. The Friendly's assemblage is not that large. The only other potential site that could be that large is a portion of the Spring Street lot, if in fact the platform was moved and the MBTA decided to ground lease a portion of that, which they're more than likely to do because it's a revenue source for them. But it's a long answer to your short question, sorry.
Maybe, or do we have any other?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Mr. Rulie. So as it said in the, in the memorandum, that, you know, the recommendations listed here have not been vetted by the Attorney General or EOHLC. If, as you mentioned earlier, if they don't agree to what's listed here, especially the affordability situation, does that jeopardize the Form-Based Code as a whole? No, it does not.
No, no.
No.
And as I said, the, this happened in Framingham, they can say, "You're in compliance, but take this out."
Okay.
And I just, because if I, Dr. Perry, the document that you have that was published, that document has been reviewed by the Attorney General's office. That has already passed their muster. So there were changes that we needed to make. We had language in there originally about, in lieu of more units, a cash contribution for public improvements, that's the Coontz law, they made us take that out. So that document that was published and in your packet has passed muster with the Attorney General's office. It has not been reviewed yet by the Secretary of, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, but I mean, really, the lawyers are in the Attorney General's office. So the only changes that potentially have not been reviewed are what was in Mr. Dutton's memo yesterday that came out of the joint meeting of the CED and the planning board on the 3rd of April.
And as a side to that, to Mr. Dutton, so if we do not act on this tonight and this gets pushed another couple of weeks, is that jeopardizing our ability to apply for the grant cycles that we were looking to do this period?
It is, it does provide a very tight timeline for us. It does not, by definition, it does not disqualify us, but it provides a very tight, tight, tight timeline for us.
That's my biggest concern, if we don't act on this tonight.
Okay.
We don't have to act until December.
Sorry, can I make one more comment?
Sure.
I definitely share those concerns as well, but having been in the midst of this process, with the versioning and the communication challenges, this has definitely been a collective delay. That's all I need to say.
Okay. So, maybe a few comments and a, and a question. So, I completely agree with the sentiment that we all have to be looking at the same piece of paper and know, kind of what we're, what we're voting on, and similarly, we need to give the public the opportunity to see that as well, and reach out to us if there's questions there. So, I like the idea of us just making sure everyone has the same set of information to make the decision. I think the other thing, I've, I've mentioned it before, but I want to reiterate it. I think a lot of this conversation has somehow, like, gravitated to this MBTA-driven action. And I want to remind people that this conversation actually started a lot long before that. Many years ago, a group of citizens got together and they talked about the future of Bridgewater, and they put together a master plan. And in that master plan, they said, there's some really important things for us to do to make sure that our roads can get fixed, and to make sure that there's an incentive for people to paint their buildings downtown. Those aren't publicly-owned buildings. It's, the, the economics of that area has to change to make those, make someone improve that space. They said they wanted parks. They said we wanted to do something about the river. They said we wanted to have more community interaction, walking space. The, the, the document is online for anybody to see. And for years, that information sat online in a document for everybody to see. We did nothing with it. And we did nothing with the version of it that happened before. And I guarantee you, if we do nothing right now, a new version will come along and we'll do nothing with that version. The idea right now is to take these ideas and actually put them into a systematic view of how can we actually repair the downtown, generate money to fix the roads, figure out the things on the water supply, get the traffic moving through it. It's a big system. Right now, a lot of the publicity is about this one activity, but I promise you, if you go back and listen to previous town council meetings, you will hear us talking about the system. We talk about the prison frequently. We talk about wastewater frequently. We talk about the roads and the road repair plan. We talk about all of the other elements of this that need to come together, so that the Bridgewater that we see in 10 years is not this one, is not the one where we can't afford to, to fill potholes, or we've got buildings that continue to fall down and we expect some restaurant to show up and save us. It's not happening. So, I think the, the reality of the plan is, how do you build an economic center with people that walk around and care about the community, and it looks like Bridgewater, and it feels like Bridgewater, and it's safe for our kids? And even, an added benefit is if the train stops in front of it and people get off and buy coffee there, and they, they sort of mill around instead of just getting into their cars at the college. That's what created all of this. That was the idea here. And so, the zoning is the town's only way to tell all these developers what we plan to do. Because if we do nothing, the existing zoning stays, and people can do what they've been doing. So, the only, the only mechanism a town has is to put together zoning that says, if you agree to build something like this, we welcome you, because you're part of our plan. And I think it's really, really important for people to read what's actually in here. This isn't a thing that says, come in and build five stories in the middle of the town. It's a thing that says, if you build here, your thing is going to look like New England. The, the, the buildings that are big are going to be behind buildings that are small. You're going to have walk-in places. You're going to have beautiful signs. You're going to help us repair the road. You're going to, you're going to be part of the community, and you're going to invest in this space in the way that we want. And that's the code. And so, I, I just really encourage people. I, I know there are a lot of versions of Bridgewater, and I truthfully respect every single one of them. I grew up here, I've experienced many of them. But, but recognize that this is not the town council trying to bring in a developer downtown. This is the town council trying to deliver on all the things you've asked for. And there's probably one shot at this. There's a, there's a bunch of grants that help us pay for it, so we don't have to raise taxes. There's a college that's interested in helping us revitalize the downtown. There's a, there's an MBTA that isn't looking to, to, to drop investment, they're looking to build a connected community, and we're in the middle of a rail expansion. Like, there, if there is a moment where this could work, it's now. And so, so that's, that's what this is about. And so, we have to get the language right, and we have to make sure we're all comfortable with the process. But I want to make sure that the vision isn't, react to MBTA and put in a bunch of houses. The vision is like, we have to fix it. And the "we" is like "us." We've had a bunch of meetings where people can show up and share their opinion. We have a council that has been talking about this for two years. Like, literally, since I joined. I joined, and I was like, hey, what do we do? How do we fix it? And we put goals in place. And we started talking to people, and we brought in Bob and said, let's hire someone new that has done this. Like, that's what's happening. And that doesn't mean you have to support it or vote for it. As a member of the community, I want you to, to, to act on your conscience and what you want it to be. I just want to make sure you're acting on the reality of what this is, and not something you read on Facebook. So, that's my view on it. I do think we have to pause. I do think we have to pause and allow everyone to read and digest what that plan is. So, I am aligned with the idea to...
Yep.
Yep, Dr. Perry?
Thank you. Um, and again, just to be a little slight contrarian to that plan, because I do feel like we should act on this right away. The first recommendation that was dealing with, you know, review by the planning board for the 30-day period, I think that was something that I did feel that the public was asking for. And I think the public is aware of that, and now, you know, we're letting them know that this particular amendment is in the policy. The other two ones about the 15 units per acre and the flex frontage requirement, again, no one else but the planning board, and would probably know about the, you know, the small details. The last part of it, again, obviously, is, is, is the, is the affordability restriction, which, you know, in my opinion, you know, currently, we have met, you know, the, the 40B requirement, and we're in good shape with that going forward for a few years. I believe we have more work to do on, you know, affordable housing, and it, it's its own entity. It's not necessarily, has to be attached to the form-based code. It shouldn't be attached to the form-based code, in my opinion. But, even if we approve this amendment that's in there, and it gets vetted out by the Attorney General and the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, if they don't like to see it in there, it can be taken out, according to Bob. It's not going to jeopardize a document. So, in that regard, I would be in favor of putting these amendments to a vote by us today, because I don't really think there's a whole lot more for the, the, the community as a whole to digest. So, we can expedite the process and get this approved, so potentially, we can get the grant process in place that we need. So desperately to, you know, and potentially lose on multiple, multiple thousands of dollars to help the town, as you said, hopefully not raise taxes in the process if we lose out on this grant money. So, I, again, I'm in a situation where I would be prepared to, to vote on these amendments tonight, so we could potentially vote on the entire document.
Thank you. And maybe just a, a question for council. So, we have a motion on the table for the amendments. So, to, to act on what Dr. Perry has proposed, we would essentially just vote on that motion that's already on the table, correct?
Yeah, you would vote the motion to amend.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other, is there any other discussion on this?
Well, I just, if I could, I just want to, I just want to be clear that, that, right now, we're not in jeopardy of losing any grant money. We don't really need to act on this till December, so, are we, we...
The grant period for the one-stop is open from May 5th to June 6th. To be in compliance with the state law, we have to have something in place by December 31st of 2024.
True.
However, to access funding, that grant window, as I said, the letter, expression of interest letters have to be in by the 26th of April. The grant period opens in May, closes in June.
But, so, right now, we're not in jeopardy of losing any grant money. If we vote on this, uh, April 23rd, we should be fine.
Correct.
I just want to make that clear.
It just would be a very tight window.
It's, it's, it's a date certain, though. I mean, we already got a, an agree, a conceptual agreement from the Attorney General, right? So, we shouldn't be denied any grant money, is what I'm saying.
No, but we still have to do the grant applications.
I understand, yeah. Well, you can, you don't have to wait till the 23rd to start it.
Right.
You can do it now.
Yeah. So, so it's clear, I, when I said it's a very tight window, absolutely. We've got multiple grant applications going on right now. Um, you know, they will be done presumably by, well, one of them will be completed and filed by the 24th, um, the day after the 23rd. So, but it's, it's tight, but, uh, we've done worse.
I know, thank you.
So, I think the answer is yes. It adds, it adds a tight turnaround time.
Right.
Counsel Robinson? Uh, through you to the town manager, and this is probably a level of detail we don't need to know, but it might be helpful for context. So, with those applications in this tight window, what actually has to go with it? Does this entire proposal around form-based code have to be with it?
It, it doesn't get submitted with it. The, um, the grant, um, all the grant agencies work much more harmoniously than they used to. So, they will cross-reference all, all kinds of things that, to make sure we're in compliance with, with all the things that are prerequisites for the grant. As, as Bob pointed out, there are multiple grants, you know, multiple, um, different grant groupings, um, that require, um, compliance, and they will go back and check with Housing and Livable Communities to make sure that Bridgewater is one of those communities that is in compliance. So, so that's kind of how it works on the state level.
Okay.
I could just add, we have to affirmatively state in the applications that we have submitted something to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities.
And when you say submitted something, does it mean this form-based code ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clear, because there's letter of intent, and then there's what goes with the letter of intent. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any additional discussion on the motion to amend? Okay. I see none. I appreciate the discussion. Uh, I think we can move to a voice vote on the motion to amend with the, the changes. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Nay. Motion passes. Motion is amended. Uh, we can now, we do have an active motion on the floor to vote on the amended version.
Of the entire form-based code?
Of the entire, yeah, entire form-based code.
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on that?
Does it continue the public hearing, right? Or not?
We, we have an existing motion from before.
Right.
No one's made a motion to continue.
No one's, no.
There's just a motion, a pending motion to approve in a second.
Okay, so there'll be no public input at the next meeting regarding this, right?
Only if you vote to continue the public hearing.
You already closed it. Then you already...
Oh, yeah. Um, I apologize. This is on me. It's a little complicated, I want to make sure I do it right.
It's on multiple pieces. It's actually, yeah, so, first of all, there's no pending motion to continue at this time.
Yeah.
Right? So, assuming that comes, that takes precedent over the motion to approve, and then you would go through that process. It's perfectly fine to have that motion say to continue the public hearing, if that is the intent at this point, even though you did the, the comment of it, the, the public hearing's closed. It isn't closed, because we're still in the matter. We're still in the hearing as it, as it is.
Got it.
All right? So...
So, we could, I just wanted, so, what words do I need to say to switch it to a continue?
So, I can propose...
So, so you just need someone to move to continue?
Continue, continue to the next scheduled town council meeting.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to continue to the next scheduled town council meeting.
That takes precedent, so now you guys discuss that.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
I, I, so, um, my sole intent on this is to allow people to read exactly how it's going to be voted on next week, or, or in two weeks, and, and I won't be here. But, I will make this statement, if I were here, I would 100% support passing it as amended. People are not going to like it. People are going to love it, and there's going to be people in the middle. And, I always come up with, one of my favorite quotes, "The sign of a great, a great compromise is when both sides walk away unhappy." So, I'm fully expecting some people at the next meeting to be unhappy, and some people to be happy. But I think overall, as what was discussed earlier, we're looking at this as for the benefit of Bridgewater. I think the amendments are going to help guide that in the future, and I think it should be 100%, 100% supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Counsel Robinson?
I wholeheartedly agree. I think also is, you know, I'm a co-sponsor of this, and I know that I've probably been a little vocal about, this has not been the smoothest or easiest path for us to digest. We are laypeople, and we, we got a crash course in a lot of important information, and it's actually been incredibly interesting. However, more, more importantly is the fact that we do need to allow folks to know exactly what we have voted on. So, I think that there's been a lot of good discussion tonight. I appreciate it, I'm glad we pushed through it. I absolutely would like to make sure that this amended version does get back to the public. So, I don't know if that's, so if we, whether that's a matter of we continue the hearing and we put advertising this again, but this cleaned-up version has got to go back out to the public. If we're struggling with this, how can we expect anyone else to get behind it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can I ask, uh, maybe just a question on the logistics of that?
So, I, I think now that you've amended it, you create that version of the amended one, and you post it. And then, we're going to, if, if the motion to continue the public hearing is allowed and approved, there will have been two weeks where that's been posted prior to that meeting, and people can digest it as they wish.
Great. Okay. Any additional discussion? Okay, I see none. Uh, we can move to a voice vote on the motion to postpone to our next scheduled meeting on April 20...
23rd?
23rd?
I think so.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay.
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 All right. We have two nay, the remaining aye, the motion passes. Uh, so, we will, uh, correct the documentation with all of the amendments. We will post that for the public to review, uh, with the intention of continuing and closing the hearing at the next meeting.
Is there proxy voting in our...
Yeah, you can get, you can get on remote voting.
Just call in.
Okay. Thank you, uh, councilors, for the rich discussion on that one. All right. Uh, Jason, I don't need to close the hearing, because it's continued.
No, it's just continued. You're fine.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to item G, license transactions. We have none. Item H, presentations, we have none. Item I, town manager's report. We have two items under the town manager's report, addressing prior public comment items. Uh, I would defer to the town manager for updates on information we heard at prior public comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just have three quick items on the questions from the last meeting that I can actually address today, this evening. Uh, one, uh, we had a very good recommendation, well-thought-out recommendation, uh, from a citizen to create an environmental committee as a committee of the council. Um, my intent, and it will depend on the, on the, uh, the, uh, what, what the next council would like to do, but my intent is to bring the admin code, specifically, excuse me, the council rules and procedures, um, in front of the new council to review and make recommendations about potentially, uh, altering the existing committees and, and potentially creating new council committees. Uh, so that will come in front of the new council, uh, after, obviously, after the election. There was a comment, a very thoughtful comment about a citizen, uh, who was concerned about the town residents and, and interested parties getting more information. We do push out as much information, um, as, as we can. What we can do is start, uh, I probably will start a, a monthly, uh, talk program of, of some sort, which, uh, people can suffer through my, my chatter, then more power to me, I guess. But I'll try to push out just factual information about what's going on in town, um, and things coming down the road, things that, that people may not know about if they're not paying close attention to council meetings. Um, we do push out the town manager's operational update on the town website, as well as our, um, YouTube channel, um, or Facebook, rather. Um, and, uh, and so I will be adding a couple other social, uh, net, so, social media network, geez, social media outlets to that, as we... And, and so I will be adding a couple other social net, so, social media network, geez, social media outlets to that as we move forward. There is, we're working on a notification. People can sign up to get the town manager's update on, on, you know, their own computer or phone, whatever, and they can be notified with a link that brings them right to the most recent. All of my form, past town manager's reports, I think for the, almost the last year, are posted on the website on the town manager's page. The, the last piece I had was, there was a comment about Department of Corrections and potential closure of the Bridgewater, the Bridgewater facilities. I've found no evidence. I have not, I've reached out to the DOC. I have not heard back from them, but there, I can't find any evidence that that is, that is something that the DOC is considering. They have announced the closure, or they have closed Walpole. They've announced and, and plan to close Concord, I believe, at the end of June. So I don't, I have not heard a thing about Bridgewater at this point. So those are the items I had for just a bit of an update. Update on the tire dump, or tires generally. There, I just want to clarify, use this op, well, I'll just tell you where we are. There was, I believe, a comment about, about the potential for the existing tire dump to be on state property, and, and we have, I've asked our engineering department to look. It depends on what evidence you use. It's very difficult to identify the line, but there is more of a possibility existing in my mind today that it is potentially on, portion of it is on state property. We will, we have had discussions with DEP about this, and we're going to jointly follow up with DCAM on potential remediation of that site, presuming it's on state property. So right now, we'll be asking BSU to, to actually survey that line and get, and really BSU would turn to DCAM to, to survey that line to be, make sure that we know exactly where that particular tire dump is. The, I'll jump just ahead because it is related. The, the ordinance you have in front of you tonight is an amendment to the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance simply allows tire dumps. And when this issue came up, we realized that we had an existing ordinance that, that really needed to be changed to, to not allow more tire dumps. We can't magically outlaw the existing ones, but we can, we can force them to, to maintain some of the, the criteria that's within the, the ordinance. So, so that was the intent of the, the amendment, which I don't know if you can vote tonight or not, but, but it is out there. So I'm happy to answer questions on that.
Are there any questions for the town manager? Okay. I see none. Thank you. We'll move on to item J, discussions. We have no discussions. Item K, committee reports. Would any committees care to report? I see none. We'll move on to item L, legislation for action. The first item, order O, FY 24 027. This is FY 25 water and sewer rates. This had been referred to FinCom. FinCom did not meet, so we actually can't vote on this. I would entertain a motion to postpone this to our next scheduled meeting.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. We'll put that in the next agenda. Item B, order O, FY 24 033, Town Council Acceptance of Proposed License Permit and Fee Increases Effective July 1. Budget and Finance voted 3 to 0 to recommend at their 319 meeting. Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend at their 318 meeting. CED voted 3 to 0 to recommend at their 41 meeting.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Item C, order O, FY 24 035, Adoption of a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Budget and Finance voted 3 0 to recommend at their 319 24 meeting. Finance Committee voted 6 0 to recommend at their 318 24.
Motion approved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Order O, FY 24 039. This one actually also cannot be voted tonight. This is deed in lieu of foreclosure. The Finance Committee did not meet, so I would entertain a motion to postpone to the next scheduled meeting.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. That'll move to our next agenda. Item E, General Ordinance D, FY 24 055, amend Chapter 74, Article 2, Storage of New and Used Tires. Rules and Procedures voted 3 to 0 to recommend with amendments at their 318 24 meeting. I would entertain a motion to refer to advertising.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just highlight the comment that our town managers mentioned where the idea behind this is there was a sort of an existing version of this that we wanted to correct. This is the correction. In the future, you know, certainly additional input to further refine that, you know, could be, could be provided. Any additional discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes to refer to advertising. The next one, General Ordinance D, FY 24 006, amend general ordinances relative to the Veterans Department. The measure was not referred to any committee. 14 days has elapsed. Therefore, the measure may be voted to be referred to advertising this evening.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. That concludes item L, legislation for action. Moving on to M, old business. We have none. Item N, new business, order O, FY 24 040, transfer order water capital. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Petition P, item B, petition P, 2024 020, a resolution in recognition of Pride Month. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee?
No, I'd, I'd make a motion to keep it at the, at the council level.
Okay. We have a motion to, to keep this at the, the council level. And we would vote it next meeting. Yep.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? I would just say I appreciated hearing comments on this. I think as people have seen me discuss in the past, this is certainly something I think is necessary in town. Any additional discussion?
Sorry, we're talking about the pride thing, right?
Yeah.
If I could just make a, a general comment, it's unfortunate that we had to hear from so many people talking about their very personal experiences, about their children's personal experiences, when we all know these things do happen in this community and everywhere, honestly. I, you know, Fred, I appreciate that Fred asked me to help co-sponsor this. I'm going to be really honest. I don't love performative things, and flags sometimes can fall under that, but I think it was a really good reminder that we still need them, apparently, because we need to remind the community that hate does not have a home here. Not to, you know, overuse a, a phrase that's been overused, right? But it is, like I said, it's just disheartening to have to hear that when we know this is already going on. A few years ago, an organization that I was involved with actually did a survey in the community, Bridgewater-Ranham, and it was with high school students, and one of the, the, one of the top issues was slurs around homosexuality. And then the second part was about being, you know, being subjected to overt racism in our schools. Here I am thinking that, like, the way I grew up, I wish, would never wish on so many young people today, and it's still happening. So here we are in our next civil rights movement again, I guess, but appreciate full support on this. Thanks.
Thank you. And Counsel Chase, as a sponsor, would you care to speak on this?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I, I certainly do appreciate, as does Counselor Robbins and the many voices who chimed in this evening to express support for the, for the flag ordinance. It was, I think we were certainly all a little tentative back in 2021 when we first contemplated this, and I was certainly personally very gratified at that time to see it meet with unanimous approval, and that ordinance was adopted by the council. And in the intervening years, the council has seen fit to unanimously, annually, adopt a resolution proclaiming that period of time as Pride Month and for the flying of the pride flag during that period. We look forward as well to later in the month of June to, to view the annual flying of the Juneteenth flag. As you know, Juneteenth is actually a holiday, not only in the United States overall, but in the town of Bridgewater specifically. So we, we look forward to that celebration as well. And I think that there's really nothing I can add to the, the much more personal comments that were delivered this evening in support. And I think I, I was really quite surprised by the, the great turnout of support that was evident this evening, and not just with respect to the flag issue. The fact of the matter is that we had a, a standing-room-only crowd here for all of the legislation before us this evening, and there was great input received on, on every issue. So I appreciate all of that, but I, I do appreciate everyone's support with respect to the flag, and that certainly extends as well to my fellow counselors for all of your past support of the flag ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel Chase. Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, I was just going to propose that we amend. I believe the dates are wrong on here. It says 2023. It's going to be June 3 through June 16, 2024.
So we have a motion to amend the dates to 2024. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. So the motion on the floor is to hold at the council level until our next scheduled meeting. Any additional discussion on that? Okay. I appreciate the comments. We can move on to a vote, a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Quick question. Is it possible to move the budget orders collectively because we're probably going to refer them all to Budget and Finance? Is that in order?
Yes. Just to, so that's item E, D, oh, sorry, C, D, E, and F, and G. Yes.
N, H.
N, H. Okay. So the motion on the table is to vote items C, D, E, F, G, and H as a single unit to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second. I'll second. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on that? I see none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Make a motion to refer C through H to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
I think that's what we just-
No, we-
And then we just do that?
No, you suspended the rules to do that, and now you have to-
Right. Now I'm going to have to vote on it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion. The first motion was the suspension of the rules to do it. Now we have a motion to do it.
So now we can do it.
Thank you.
So moved.
All right.
A lot better.
So now we have a motion on the floor is to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item O, citizen comments. Just read this again. Due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate, responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. We would invite anyone from the public who would like to speak to approach the podium and keep it under three minutes. Thanks.
Hi, Janet Hansen, Pleasant Street. Couldn't end without, obviously, making a comment. I want to first say thank you for continuing the zoning to the next meeting, at least so we can see what it is because it's very hard to follow. I have no idea what the amendments are, and I'm hoping I can find it on the website easy. But to be honest, I don't think it's really going to matter to the public. I mean, we're going to see it, but even though we can still comment on it, which I'm glad, I don't feel like it's going to make a difference at this point. I'm hoping it might, but I just, I am glad that you're continuing it, and I appreciate everybody's time on this. We just don't need to look like a big city to get what we want to get done. I'm still going to say it. I'm disappointed on the height. I just feel that's going to be too big. And I'm just concerned about the homes and the small businesses that are already in that area of the CBDR. I just feel like they're going to be pushed out. That's Spring Street, Hale Street, and even on Broad Street. Hopefully not. And I am disappointed. I mentioned it in my letter and also tonight. I hear nothing about Central Square, and that's part of all this. It's right in there about the central business S, standard. I would want, I was hoping, since you didn't discuss it tonight, if you can just definitely discuss it next week. Everything's about the R, which is a big, major thing, but I need clarification on the language within that standard. I, I have some questions on it, and it's confusing. I want Central Square to be protected, and hopefully that's what it is. But there's a lot of words like demolitions in there, and I think people need to know what is intended in that standard. So I really hope, I was disappointed you didn't bring it up. So other than that, I just hope you realize that whatever you put in that ordinance, it's etched in stone. You can't tell somebody if they want to build five stories that they can't because it says they can. And I know it's a certain percentage, but I'm just concerned that it leaves a lot to not be able to say no. So, but thank you for your time, and I hope to hear about the other standard next time. Thank you.
Yep. Good evening. Jim Candido, Stetson Street. Reason I didn't come up earlier, I wanted to hear your discussion on, that you just had. I didn't receive the town manager's email. I wasn't in your three-hour meeting, so we don't get all the details. As mentioned before, many folks are against the farm-based code. This is another forced 40B, as far as I'm concerned. I guess we can call this the governor's forced 40ABC. If the town agrees, we get a carrot. If the town disagrees, we get the big hammer and the sickle. Many towns in the Commonwealth already have rejected this. I think it's going to court, and I think we should just step back. I'm glad Mr. Judge recommended pushing it out at least until the end of April. But I'd like to run this by you, Mr. President, to the town manager, because we never get feedback. We can come up here and talk for three minutes and, three minutes and three minutes, and we have no feedback. But can the town manager put on the ballot for November? This issue, this farm-based, to see what the town thinks about it as a whole instead of pockets? That's a question, and hopefully I can get an answer tonight. You know, the campus plaza, like has been mentioned so many times before, the height, I think you should just say four stories, period. No matter what you're building, except maybe a church steeple, to not go higher than four stories. There's no reason for five. There's no reason for six. As I've mentioned before, Campus Plaza, the Bridgewater Common, will never be a destination site, not in its location. I was happy to hear about the Correctional Institute. Boy, look at the acreage there. Look at the town that could be built out. But, you know, these two locations will never be a Mashpee Commons. There'll be, never be a Mansfield Village. There'll never be a Derby Street like in Hangum. So think about that again. So like I said, if Mr. Dutton can put it on the November ballot, that would be terrific. I don't know where you stand or what we can do about it. Where do we stand with a traffic study that's been mentioned with all these proposals? This should be a no-brainer and a good start. I know traffic studies have been here. I've been here for only 53, 54 years, and I hear about them every year. And my wife's family's only been here for, in the same house for 120 years. Nothing's changed for them. This should be a no-brainer. As Governor Baker mentioned in 2019, people in Massachusetts don't need a traffic study in the city to confirm what they experienced every day.
We're at three minutes.
I got another one minute.
You're at three minutes. Yeah.
Someone want to grant you some, three minutes?
Can't do that.
No, sorry. What we can, I, I'm happy to come talk with you after and-
I want to finish this.
Unfortunately, we can't.
Well, I'm going to finish this article.
It's by open meeting law, so we, we-
10 seconds. 10 seconds. Then the next item, I'll talk to you one- Then the next item, I'll talk to you one-on-one.
Okay. We'll do 10 seconds just to close it out, please.
All right. Just to close it out. What Governor Baker said, to confirm what he has experienced, we experience it every day. The congestion has gone from bad to worse, from occasional inconvenience and frustration to a constant daily reality. And this also includes local roads.
Thank you.
I'll mention the next thing to you, but what I'm going to do is give you these newspapers because we don't have any communication in the town.
Okay. Maybe actually, could you hand them to the town, yeah, the town clerk? We will absolutely get it.
That's the round.
Okay.
And I can take 10 seconds to talk about this.
All right. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to speak?
Hi, Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. It's my understanding that items that are brought forward at citizens' comments would be addressed at the next meeting. This is my little note paper from the previous meeting to tonight, when I asked about hybrid meetings, parking, people parking out front here and taking the 30-minute spots all day. I asked about, a question about the nip, and I asked about microphones. None of those were addressed tonight. And I will just leave by reminding you again that we have trouble hearing back here. I don't know how it comes out on Facebook or video, but you have to put the microphones here. This doesn't work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Berro Domingo, 36 Saddle Drive. I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do. It's evident that you really take everything seriously that is in front of you and that you have to consider for the town and how you want your, the vision that you have for the town and how you are trying to be as inclusive as possible. So I just want to thank you for that. I appreciate the comments that you've made regarding the resolution for the, on the pride flag. Thank you.
May I make new comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Adeline Ellenberg. Question to the town manager. Some of the lots are small, and we were told that certain things could not be built on small lots. There are ways to consolidate lots. Would that be happening? And if so, where and how many units possibly? Okay. Second thing is, is when I was reviewing the comments about the Perkins Foundry development, which I believe is the first online, it says that there are environmental concerns. That's all it says. It does not specify. I was wondering if we could have an answer as to what's going on environmentally. I hate to think of apartments there, children playing outside and getting sick if it's bad. So I want to say thank you for all the work you have done. And I can see that you've done a lot of work. Okay? So thank you for that, and thank you for continuing it for one more session. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else from the public care to speak? Okay. I see no additional comments. We'll close out citizen comments, and I'll move ahead to councillor comments, starting with councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, it's been a very interesting and long meeting this evening, and I want to thank all the citizens that came out and spoke at our meeting tonight, particularly all the comments regarding the resolution to recognize the pride flag that will be raised next month or in June. So I've got wind that there was going to be some discussion tonight about, about the flag policy in town. And I said, okay, you know, people have a right to come and speak. But all the comments tonight, a dozen, over a dozen comments tonight, were in support of the pride, the raising of the pride flag. Nobody spoke in opposition. Not everybody applauded that was in the audience, but I'd even think by the end of some of those brief speeches, some of those that weren't applauding were applauding. So I really do want to thank those that spoke, spoke out tonight in support of this initiative. And I do hope that whatever council comes forward on, after April 27th, that that tradition does continue as part of an annual process at the council level. And although it's probably always going to be on the minds of those to come and speak in support of it, I hope that you do it in the sense of that you want to and not in the, in the sense that you fear that someone's going to come and try to take that right away. Because I think that that was the tone of coming into tonight's meeting. So I really do appreciate those comments. And I will definitely be in attendance this year, although not a councillor at the time, at that time, but I will be in attendance for that ceremony because I think it's a worthy ceremony in our community. And again, I thank all those that spoke in favor of that. I had a great time with councillor George last week where he and I helped our veterans. We, well, he did most of the cooking, but I did most of the cleaning, actually. But we helped the VFW post down on Oran Street, helped the veterans spaghetti supper. It was well-attended, and it was, it was a great civic thing to do. And I actually had an opportunity to meet, I believe, our new veterans agent. And I think he'll be a great addition to the community and the district once those things are finalized. And so this is my second-to-last meeting, but we do have a budget and finance meeting coming up, not on April 23rd before the council meeting, we have a special, sort of a special council, a special budget and finance meeting on April 16th. So I would encourage anyone that's running for council or even, even some of my current colleagues who will be here after, after April 27th, because you may be on that committee. So, because we're going to lose two of us after April 27th. And the budget, the $70 million budget will be discussed. I know we will have a discussion about it too eventually on the council, but anyone that wants to attend that, feel free to do so. On the form-based code, again, that has been probably one of the most arduous processes that this town has gone through. We have been certainly involved in there, but the hours that the planning board and the Community and Economic Development Committee from this council have put into that public policy has been tremendous. And like, has been said before, no matter what the vote is, not everybody's going to be happy with it. What happens with all these lawsuits that are pending in other communities and how that may affect us if we approve it or not approve it, we don't know. But again, we have heard, as the council president Moore has said, we have been trying to, for so long, address the needs of our downtown and the downtown revitalization, whether it starts at the Common to Broad Street to Spring Street to Campus Plaza. And we now have a vision and a policy that's coming to head to help address that, not forced on us. We took a lot of time over the last couple of years to develop this with amendments, with discussions, with hearings, with citizens' input, surveys, consultants. This wasn't something we just whipped up and put it before the town or the council to support. So however the vote is in two weeks, however that pans out, I think that we can certainly, hopefully, be known as a council and a town that took it seriously and did our due diligence. And finally, I just want to say, I know tonight is councillor George's final council meeting because he has said that he will not be able to make the April 23rd meeting. And I just want to say, Sean, as a, as a friend and as a colleague, I appreciate the work, the dedication that you have had to this community. I, I know your wife is here tonight, and the time that you have taken away from doing things with her and your family over these past seven or eight years, I know has not gone unforeseen. So thank you for the time you have spent on the council, and I certainly appreciate the work that you've done, particularly with, with me and councillor Lindy and others on the, on the budget and finance committee. Your input is certainly worthy. Your expertise and the knowledge on that have been very, very helpful to all of us. And you've held us all accountable on certain things. You've spoken your mind, and that's what we need to do as a councillor. So again, I wish you well in the future. I know you're not going away. You're just not going to be sitting in that chair after, after tonight. So I just want to say thank you for the, for your service to the town, and the town should be grateful for all of us anyway that step up to the plate and serve, whether it's one term or three or four terms. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councillor Lindy?
Oh gee, I didn't expect that.
Surprise.
I want to echo what Dennis just said about councillor George. I think his budget and finance experience taught me some lessons and very thoughtful and dedicated service. You're going to be missed for sure. We'll have to have you do cooking lessons for pizza, and then we can all learn how to make it better. I really thank the citizens of Bridgewater for coming out tonight and speaking about their concerns and their thoughts. I'm glad we continued the, you know, the form-based code to the next meeting. I know it's tight, but obviously we have a meeting, so we have to act on it at that point. And I'm sad to see a business in Central, two businesses close in Central Square. The Comic Bookstore and Central Square Computer. Central Square Computer moved to, is in Middle Borough where the other office is, but I'm worried about that. I would echo the comments that were made here before about what are we going to do with the downtown business district? Okay? And I just want to see us move forward with that part, too. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lindy. Councillor Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to firstly, just briefly commend councillor George on his tenure here in the council and his very forthright leadership over the years. I think that Mr. Fitzgibbons, who was here earlier this evening, I think made a perfectly valid point, and I agree with him entirely, which is that in every respect, I think that councillor George has always acted in the best interests of the town. And I think it's evident when we listen to him, when we watch what he does, I think that he is always striving to take into account the greatest good for the greatest number. And I commend him for that. I think it's, it certainly served the council very well, and we all are very appreciative of that. I did just want to make one quick comment with respect to, as we're referring to it, the form-based code. And it's simply this, when, when people ask me about either an opinion about it or, you know, kind of what's the status of, of that particular legislation, I, I'm in the habit of always referring to it as downtown revitalization. It's, it's really the kind of the shorthand, you know, term that I've used for years referring to the need to revitalize our downtown. And I still refer to it that way. And I think that's actually kind of convenient because it really is much more than the form-based code. And if you think about it, there are really three components to what we're attempting to do. Yes, the form-based code makes for a much more streamlined approval process, which is something that'll certainly be attractive to developers. And just because it's streamlined doesn't mean that it is at all short-circuiting. In fact, if you look at the form that form-based code will utilize, it's 11 pages long, and it's a matter of check the box. And so when those boxes correctly, accurately reflect every need of the town with respect to a particular development, to show that yes, a developer has complied with each and every component, it really eliminates a tremendous amount of work for town planners, for the planning board, for the council, for all of us. So that's form-based code. The other components, of course, one of which is the MBTA Communities Act. And we know that that is a mandate that we don't have much wiggle room with respect to. And I know that there are some communities who have challenged it, and I'm sure some will continue to. As you know, I think, in the case of the town of Milton, the attorney general has brought suit against the town, and that is before the Supreme Judicial Court. And it will not, the SJC will not even hear oral arguments on that until October, which means that the likelihood of resolution from the court prior to the 12/31 date when many communities would need to be in compliance is not a period of time appropriate to adopt the zoning changes necessary to comply with it. So towns that do that, unfortunately, in my opinion, are really playing with fire. And I say that because one of the biggest downsides of not being in compliance is the loss of a great amount of grant revenue and, as well, inviting suit from the Commonwealth, such as Milton faces. And that certainly means that were a community to face that prospect, they would need to, they would need to hire outside counsel to defend the town at considerable cost. And it's, in my estimation, not a winning proposition. Part of the relief that's being sought from the Supreme Judicial Court is a declaratory judgment. And if, in fact, the SJC does grant a motion for declaratory judgment and rule on that basis, this could be a very swift end. In fact, it really would mean that there's no, there's no trial per se. It would be a slam dunk in favor of the Commonwealth. Now, with respect to grant funding, we've spoken about a lot of that tonight in a different context. And I'll just remind you that two weeks ago, we sat here, and we found that we had a number of items on our agenda that were all related to grant funding, and there were five of them. And just as we did tonight in another matter, we decided to group them together and pass the, and accept the grants on the basis of one single vote, not five separate votes, just as a matter of expediency, which is appropriate in circumstances. The only downside to that is the public didn't necessarily get to know what these grants were, how much they were, and how much the town has come to rely on grant funding. There were five of them, as I mentioned, and in total, they exceeded $500, $550,000. Now, those are just grants that were approved and accepted by the council two weeks ago tonight in this room. We find grant money that we need to accept here on a regular basis. Grant funding is what makes our taxes as stable as they are because we certainly don't want to, we have a limited ability to increase taxes. We certainly don't want to need to approve, you know, debt exclusions or overrides with any regularity. Sometimes we need to do that. But by acceptance, by seeking and accepting grant funding, we keep a very close, a very tight cap on taxation for citizens of Bridgewater. So it's extremely important, and I think that in the context of MBTA communities, it would be very short-sighted to risk foregoing that kind of revenue. So that's really all I wanted to say, and I, I really just want to thank everyone for coming tonight, no matter what really motivated you to be here. And there were, there were probably some 40 people here tonight. I think it may have been a record attendance. And it was, it was so good to hear comments from each and every one. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chase. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to try to keep my comments short. I know I've already spoken a lot tonight, so I just wanted to thank the group that came out and spoke about the pride flag tonight. I know it's not easy, again, to share those stories, particularly sharing the stories of others, which some people did. So thank you. You have my support, and I look forward to voting on that resolution in the future. I want to also thank the members of the tree committee for their work. It was great to hear that update and hear how far they've come in such a short period of time of revitalizing that committee. So again, thank you to those folks. And thank you to councillor George. You will be missed. You've been my partner in answering my whispered questions typically once a meeting. You've been my partner in answering my whisper questions typically once a meeting, and so I look forward to hopefully finding a new partner there, but thank you for all your services as well.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. Councillor, or Dr. Perry?
Oh, thank you. I didn't know where I was going from there, so. We're all over the map tonight. Again, I also wanted to echo a lot of the sentiments that have already been said so far. I counted 22 people that came up and spoke tonight at the beginning of the meeting. I think that is a record in my tenure as being on the council. It was great seeing the numbers, and I do appreciate everyone's comments, and that came up here tonight. So, I just want to, again, credit the system of citizens' open forum, giving people a chance to share their voice and opinions. I also, too, wanted to thank councillor George for his service. Again, everything's probably already been said, but he's, I personally just got to miss his directness when it comes to certain issues. I'm certainly going to miss his experience that he's had of eight years on the council. Whoever who steps into his particular seat has a big seat to fill. So, I thank Mr. George, and wish him the best in his future endeavors, and who knows, maybe he will come back down the line. We'll see. Let's see. I also want to, again, Mr. Chase's comments on Form-Based Code and the MBTA Communities Act, very well-spoken, completely agree with everything he said there. You know, the towns that are fighting this, that's certainly their prerogative, but as a town, a lot of grants and money is available. We've got a big bill coming up in water and sewer expansion repair, and without following the MBTA Communities Act, we're going to be potentially out on tens of millions of dollars of potential grants coming in to help us, you know, pay that bill. And we don't want to see that falling back on the taxpayers. So, again, very, very important that, you know, the work is being done by the council, the level of work, the time it's taken to get to this level, you know, will come up hopefully at our next meeting, and a vote can be taken. As it was asked, can this be brought up on a ballot in November? And I believe the answer is definitely no, it's not going to be brought up on a ballot. But it's on behalf of the town and the best interest of the town. Most of us have been here in town a very long time, we all have the best interests of the town at heart. We don't want to see anything negative or negatively impactful happen on the town. So, all of us are in the same heart and light going forward, trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town, so the town can grow responsibly, and, you know, in the direction that's going to make most people happy. What else I want to say? Oh, one other thing I do want to mention, as an aside, I'm also president of Lions Club. We have a little fundraiser coming up this weekend at the vets' club. We have a little Las Vegas night for anyone who wants to attend, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. You can buy tickets at the door, but it's going to be a really fun event, and all proceeds go to Lions Club charities and I research. So, if anyone wants to attend, please come on down. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Perry. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Three points I wanted to make for these comments. The first one is about pride. I think one of the commenters in public comments summed it up, "Our children are watching." They're not watching this town council meeting, but obviously, but they're watching us. And so, I appreciate so much support that's out there to make sure that, you know, most of us adults are hopeless at this point, but my gosh, can we please help the next generation? The second is about Form-Based Code and all the discussions we've been having. I shared this at our joint hearing, but I'm just going to share this just because of the benefit of, some people do actually watch these recordings. It may be a bit of a surprise, but I grew up in a town very much like Bridgewater, but actually smaller than Bridgewater. My hometown was about 10,000 people, and I played in cornfields, believe it or not. And every time I go back to visit my dad, and he's so sick of hearing this from me, I complain incessantly that they have this amazing downtown area where they have built a mixed-use development, and it is thriving. It's got a big grocery store, Ace Hardware, mom-and-pop shops, as well as some, you know, like smaller chain stores. They have a Salvation Army that's drawing literally people from miles and miles away. I've never seen a Salvation Army that looks so shiny and amazing. They have amazing restaurants as well. And I can still attest that the farm that I played on is still intact, it's there. Now, granted, it's definitely suffered over the years, like so many farms has, just because of the way the farming industry has been affected. But I can tell you that that development has had nothing to do with the farm, which I said again, is still in operation. So, I just share this with the fact that, one, I have a lot of heart for this community. It's, you know, it's very much like down-to-business, I can be very direct. I have a lot of heart for this community to be a beautiful, continue to be beautiful, which it is, but to make our downtown match the rest of it, right, in terms of the beauty and services that can really support this community. And so, I think Eric put it so beautifully earlier, right, that, and I think he also probably echoes the sentiment of this council, even though we're all very different, we have different backgrounds, we have really come with the same passion of seeing a vision for Bridgewater that's pretty exciting, and I think that could be possible. And I don't think we'll necessarily take away what folks may think may happen. So, that is the hope, and I think that has really been the spirit of this council, so it's been really, really cool to see. And my last is, I have to, of course, join in thanking councillor George, and you will be missed. You and I have agreed on a lot of things, you and I have disagreed on a lot of things, but we've always been able to have such awesome discourse. I'm going to miss your feistiness sometimes as well, and I'm also going to miss some of the laughs. And, you know, like I said, we've agreed, we've disagreed, but you've also literally held an umbrella over my head as well. So, thank you for your service to this town, and look forward to seeing you in any other capacity. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Normally, I go last. I'm going to hand off that honor to councillor George. So, I'll say a few short comments, and then I would actually ask councillor George at the end to share his thoughts. Similar to what others said, you know, I spoke before about the vision to the future, you know, and I recognize, you know, sometimes, like, change takes belief, right? And I don't believe we're going to be at Mashpee Commons, I believe we'll be better. I believe we will be Bridgewater, and we will have our version of that central location in town, and it will reflect the entire town's thumbprint on the buildings that are built there. The people that are there are going to be the same as the people who show up here, and are fans of the town and are trying to make it better. So, you know, I recognize that some of that is belief, but, you know, I don't know of anything good that happened without belief, so. I would also say I appreciate the flag, everyone who spoke about the flag. It was actually good to see all of the voices that have been added to that conversation this year, and I think, you know, it is such a critical display of solidarity and support for our community, that I can't imagine a year where we don't do it. And as councillor Gallagher said, you know, I hope others who join the council feel the same. I would also like to thank councillor George. I think, you know, I joined at the tail end of COVID, did not have the instruction book on how to be a councillor, literally knew nothing, and had no one to talk to, so you had to figure it out. But councillor George spent time with me on the phone, I remember being at a baseball, or one of my son's games, had a question, it was like a Saturday, and you'd like talk to me through it. And so, I think, you know, as others have said, we expect people to have different opinions, but we also expect you to engage in that in a really productive way, and try to get to the best outcome for everyone. And councillor George always approached every conversation, like, with that mindset of, it is a debate, and by debate, we get a better outcome. And through being friendly and supportive of your peers, you know, you build the relationships in a very genuine way that people appreciate kind of what you do. And so, councillor George did that in an amazing way, and also, I want to recognize, guided this council through a very tough period in COVID, and brought us out the other end stronger. And so, for all the reasons everyone else said, all of my own personal reasons, you will certainly be missed, and I do hope you continue to share your voice as a resident, as a neighbor of those who now represent us. So, thank you. With that, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you to everyone. As I sat trying to put together a short list of things to talk about during my time in the town council, the first thing that came to my mind was to quote a verse of the Grateful Dead song, "Truckin'." What a long, strange trip it has been. But before I talk about my seven-plus years in the Bridgewater Town Council, I need to start by saying some well-deserved and probably well-overdue thank yous. To the supporters who encouraged me to run for the Bridgewater Town Council, even when I had serious doubts, I could be the first to defeat a sitting town councillor. To the voters of Bridgewater who elected me three times to the town council, I realize not everyone who voted for me would agree with every stance I took on town matters, but I do hope all understand, any stance I took was for the overall benefit of Bridgewater. To attorney Rollins, in his very straightforward, black-and-white approach to very complex legal matters, and keeping the town council out of legal hot water, although I still firmly believe town councillor members can attend any town or district meeting without having to post it. We'll leave that for debate later. To town manager Michael Dutton and his team, for their efforts over the years keeping Bridgewater moving forward, even if it is at the speed of government. They all have been very accommodating to my requests over my term, and have helped me with preparing for town matters that I was involved in. To the former town council clerk, Ann Holmberg, and current town council clerk, Deb Ward, working for nine different people while supporting resident requests is a daunting task that has been done with great success. To the nine current and eight former town councillors that I've had the honor and privilege to serve with, even though there are many times over the years that we did not agree, I never felt any one, any one of the councillors were driven by personal gain. To say the town council role at many times is a job that has many ups and downs, but this group as a whole has kept things moving forward. And last, but certainly not least, thank you to my family. Having to deal with my committee and town council meetings, town events, and folks needing to talk to me for a minute as we did things in Bridgewater, eating, shopping, picking up my dry cleaning, getting a cup of coffee, and probably a bunch of other things, was not easy for them, but my family never complained once about those situations. Again, I cannot say thank you enough. And now to close on my final thoughts. Bridgewater, in my opinion, is at a crossroads regarding its future identity. Yes, we have been a farming town for centuries, but, and with that came a small-town charm that is beneficial to this day. But that should not stop the community from looking forward on how Bridgewater needs to change to position itself for long-term growth and success in the future. This is where the current and future members of the town council have to listen to all opinions, be it from meetings, telephone calls, emails, being stopped in the street, or any other avenue of communication, and take them all into consideration on where to stand. The ones who are the loudest should not drown out the ones who are the quietest. They all should weigh the same. I very much appreciate everyone listening to my thoughts, and with that, I would like to make my last motion as a town council meeting. Since there's no executive session, I make a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, councillor George.
Thank you.